This meeting is meeting to order. Commissioner Waring, I'll thank you for your need some pledge allegiance.
Sure.
Pledge allegiance to apply the United States of America to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Commissioner Hodges is absent tonight, but he will be here for our next scheduled meeting. Okay, first up, Commissioner Waring, we have discussion approval and more pool of last meeting's minutes. You was presented. And I will second that, all in favor, I, motion carries. Onto our calendar from our last meeting, is there discussion questions? I do not, I have no further comments on that either, so we'll move on to previously signed documents. You was presented. Second, all in favor, I, motion carries. Uh, next up, uh, Superintendent Seer from Corrections with your update. Michelle, how are you? Nice to see you.
Good, how are you?
Been an action-packed summer for you?
It has been a very busy summer. But you both have the, um, report most central. So currently, um, I'm order. Currently, we have eighty inmates total, um, fifty-one are pre-trial, meaning they're awaiting sentencing. Twenty-four are sentenced, three are out on electronic monitoring and two are being posted outside the facility. As you can see, our numbers have gone up since the spring, so we have a slight increase. We have twelve currently on electronic monitoring, that's three inmates for pre-trial services people. We have eight currently, four in total. We have twelve out on that completely have been on a work release, five that are active. We have nine currently in core. And we have done, um, forty referrals to, um, treatment beds at one sentence. Per count has been up to eight hundred and forty, which is a little less than last year at eight ninety-eight. We have had two hundred and forty-eight protective custody, that's, you know, like usually brought in from the hospital. We've eighty currently out on pre-trial services supervision. Again, four of those are currently with electronic monitoring. Those are the programs that we have available. As you may see down at the core section, we're now offering core on the pre-trial side. We have two classes that are available to inmates to voluntary participate in. We're hoping to increase that as we go, hopefully that will increase the number of inmates that are sentenced over to the core side. Cause they've already participated, two of the core classes. We have a community service, um, which is helping with their county landscaping. They recently repaired one of the county plow trucks. We've had one correction officer that's completed the academy in September. We have one more, sorry, one that finished on September thirteenth. We have another one that's going to be attending in the next academy. We've also moved, um, community corrections officer Nicole Eglon over to the full-time pre-trial services position. She applied for that and accepted that position. We're up to date in our training. Annually, we have to do forty hours, so we're slowly chipping away at that forty hours technically, it's not like thirty, but we do close to forty. And we're also moving over to Gracie Defensive Tactics. This year, a lot of the other counties have moved over that as well, as well as the local law enforcement will be able to train with other agencies, which will be helpful to us. We're on track for our spending, we're at about sixty-two percent, this is as of last week. Um, and we're on track for our new jail software, which will go live in September. Do you have any questions for me?
So how are things going over there structurally? How was, how was the summer, was the AC working as supposed to?
The AC's been great.
And have there been plumbing issues?
We've had some plumbing issues, um, one of our units is not draining at all, so maintenance has continually had to repair that. As you're aware, the building's old, so a lot of the drains haven't worked right. We were having some toilet issues due to the fact that some of the toilets are, need to be correction grade, need to be repaired or replaced, we put Band-Aids on them to get us through, but there's a lot of structural issues that over the many years buildings aged, so in as it ages, it requires more and more maintenance.
So, uh, what about the roof, any leaks?
No, the roof is repaired, um, a few months ago. That was where the major leak was occurring, so the leaks have reduced. We keep an eye on it, um, we are working on the fire sprinkler system. We had some leaking going on from the main water zone that comes into the jail, actually comes into the attic is one of the parts. And it was leaking, we do rounds regularly to check pipes for leaking and all of that as well.
So the budget cycle's just around the corner. So I would, I don't need a reminder, but I would suggest that you factor in some of these defects into your budget and perhaps we can work it through when presenting the delegation approval, maybe get some of the more glaring issues addressed next year and try and keep up with it as best we can.
As I've discussed, discussed with, um, Michelle, over the fact that we might want to start looking, obviously not now, but in the future, at studies to replace that building, cause I worked with, um, John Bossy on maintenance and we're talking about one point five million right now. As just a rough estimate over some of the issues that are dealt with. So it's going to keep increasing the costs as the building ages, so some point in time, I recommend that we start looking to determine if five, ten years down the road, we do look at getting a new building, I understand it's very expensive though.
How is, um, how do you feel things are going morale-wise? I know you have a high profile inmate there and
We have a few of them currently that are high-profile, um, staff act appropriately, they're very good at what they do. We're working on morale every day, morale and correctional facility is normally the best, but we are working very hard to improve that between capital lieutenant myself and down to the sergeants and corporals, a lot of training, trying to give them new opportunities, like the Gracie instructor program to get us more up to date in some areas. But we're used to having high-profile inmates, they aren't treated any differently than our regular inmates. Wait, keep it at that.
You can worry here. It's trade, so all the officers on COs are certified now, cause I knew we were behind a little bit with that.
We will be fully up to par, um, after the next set, she will graduate around November. We currently, probably bypassed part, we currently do have three openings. Um, we've made an offer to two individuals already, one of them is certified, the other one is not. And we're interviewing for the third officer, we do have some candidates in that pool that are also certified.
Third one now is certified.
It will be as of November. We have one more left. So we're working on that, chipping away. We had, we were expecting to have fully certified by September thirteenth, but due to staffing, we had to bump one person out because we don't, we tried to balance the overtime, we're sending through the academy, so it wasn't efficient for us, sent two people at once.
So as far as, uh, infrastructure goes, although you mentioned those defects, no emergencies right now?
Nope. You're, uh, that could change day to day, it depends on what's going on down there. Um, but I work really well with maintenance, we go back and forth over things, so that helps.
Okay. Commissioner Waring? Michelle, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You listen.
Commissioner Waring, we have, um, nursing home maintenance, uh, Mr. Pauli is here. Richard, how are you? Good to see you.
Good to see you, thank you for having me.
Always, what do you got for us?
Uh, so I'm here to present the results for an RFP I put out a couple of weeks ago. Uh, this is for a new variable frequency drive for air antler number three. Uh, the current drive is from nineteen ninety-six and we are no longer able to get replacement parts. The cooling fan and motor, uh, is what brings me here, it is failed, we had two companies look at it, full recommend replacement of the drive. Uh, so I put out an RFP, we got back two bids, uh, wicked cool mechanical for ten thousand seven hundred and fifty and HVAC unlimited for eighteen thousand four hundred and thirty. Um, recommending we go with wicked cool for the price alone, um, as well, they're going to be working with Grand State Automation, we just did our energy management project to tie everything together.
Uh, you've worked with, you and John have worked with wicked cool in the past here or not?
Yes, a bunch.
Uh, pretty positive experience?
Yeah.
And, uh, do we have any experience with each bag unlimited, like they ever work errors?
They've done a couple of smaller repairs for us.
And they did okay, so?
They did too.
Do we know why there's such a discrepancy when it seems like it's the same scope of work?
That I, I wish I could give you a better answer, but I'm not sure. John and I went over the, the bids together and we're both happy with wicked cool, uh, they're putting a good quality product.
Yeah, that's good. Commissioner Waring?
I'll move to accept the recommendation as presented.
Second, all in favor? I, I, motion carries, take the commissioner's. Thank you. Good job making those bids and I'm glad you got more than one.
Yes.
Thank you. Our pleasure. All right, Commissioner Waring, you have some donations here with berews. We have a donation from Jack and Teresa Villago in memory of Nancy Lougier. The amount of seventy-five dollars, actually that's closure. And we also have a very nice donation from Mark Laurie Savoy in memory of Peter Spinning. An amount of two hundred dollars. So thank you both for your generosity and warm hearts, uh, motion accept. So we're with second, all in favor?
I.
I, the motion carries. Thank you donors. Uh, Lori Sharp is here with the financial update. You've been busy too this summer, haven't you?
Very busy, yes, I'm a good summer. Great. Right to it. Now, going in order of how you should have your documents, the first thing you'll have there is a receivable balance history. And, um, it, it looks a little, I'm just going to point out to me, but I, I understand why, it looks a little wonky. If you look at their area, it says percent collected. In the beginning of the year, February, March, April, May, June, it's, um, clearly over a hundred percent, and the reason for that is we're still collecting on things that were built in two thousand and twenty-three, and so it's making that number look like an increased number. And then, um, I will just point out, since I pointed that out, that July is showing eighty-one percent. And that's because when I did this report in, um, the beginning of August, we still hadn't collected all of what was built um, yet, those collections for the, uh, month of July happened well into, uh, the month of August, so that's what's happening there. Um, you'll see on two thousand and seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, there's some amounts there. Those are being actively collected, um, they are old, but they do have payment plans attached to them and we collect on those, um, monthly. And the reason that the eighteen and nineteen, you don't see go down significantly is because they're collecting on the oldest debt first. Um, but all in all, the accounts receivable collections are still rolling in and, um, it'll be good to see, I think in August, when we report everything, uh, for August, that that number that says eighty-one currently uh, looks more normal like the ninety-six would. That's about where we're at with those. Um, moving on to the next, you should have a cash flow there. Um, I would say kind of like we, we thought we may be predicting, we are going to need to do another, um, tan and based on our flow of spending um, with receipts as well as still considering, um, our balance of ARPA cash to use uh, for cash flow that is being projected for the end of September, that we would want to have something in place. Um, currently, the rates are, and when I say currently, I quite literally mean in the month of August. The rates are still projected around four point five percent. I did check with bond council to see where the rates are at, but the other thing I was advised is, which I think we're all kind of hearing in September, those rates are expected to go down.
Yeah.
So we'll obviously be looking for that. Um, just as a side note, we are earning five point two percent on the money that we have in the bank. So that was just kind of a side thing I looked up. Uh, currently, we do have a surplus in debt service interest, uh, from the first tan. Um, as you may remember, that, um, had come in a little bit lower than what we had budgeted, um, so that would certainly cover any, uh, additional interest from a second borrow. Um, and then another thing to note on that is, um, I did look back and the treasurer had received all of the necessary, necessary approvals to borrow up to fourteen million dollars uh, in the beginning of the year, so that would, uh, be taken care of as well. Questions on that?
Have you been in contact with the treasurer to start the process?
I did, uh, contact him last week, um, just via email and I gave him this cash flow, let him know that it would be what I was presenting on Monday night. Uh, and he will, I know that goes away at some point, he will be available and, um, you know, I've let him know if he has any questions or, or to let me know, and so he's part of the process. And the next thing you should have is an expense, um, budget actual and kind of a, a little disclosure, just as a reminder, um, that surplus and the deficit deficit numbers are projections and of course those can change. Um, we're updating those constantly as things, things happen, but this is as of right now. And I'm just going to run through these, um, you can surely go up me and ask any questions as we go. Um, all right, so county convention is projecting a nineteen hundred dollar surplus and that's due to fewer meetings, um, which is resulting in a savings on meeting fees and travel. County attorney's office has a forty-one thousand eight hundred and three dollar surplus, that's due to staffing changes. Um, so there was a promotion that's adding to expense, but then there was some turnover which offset that. Um, and currently there is a vacancy there. Um, and that's going to affect wages and benefits, but it's too soon to know exactly what's going to happen with that until um, there's somebody in place for that one. Administration is, um, still projecting a five thousand dollar deficit due to legal services. And we're still thinking there a transfer is going to be needed, um, I do have some materials with me that we can discuss that after we go through these. IT has a nineteen hundred dollar surplus and that's due to some of the projects that were, um, over covered and some are under. Um, so it resulted in a nineteen hundred dollar surplus. Finance is projecting seventy-four hundred dollar deficit. Uh, that's due to a staffing change, um, and then again, same with that, a transfer would be needed. Um, and I have that with me, we can talk about that after. Um, D is showing a deficit of forty-four hundred dollars. And the reason for that is, um, she's potentially wanting to hire an employee um, and train that person prior to an expected vacancy that would happen after the election. Um, so depending on that and the timing of it, that number may actually come down. But that one will, will update it as time goes on. On maintenance, there's seventy-six hundred dollar surplus and, uh, that's due to uh, leaks, the AC leaks in the courthouse and also the electricity line, um, the budgeted amount projects, oops, sorry, I have a paper in my note. Oh. The budgeted projects, sorry, um, have actually been placed on hold. Um, some of those have been placed on hold to cover that deficit, um, in there, uh, so that's the seventy-six hundred dollar uh, result, resulting surplus. The sheriff's department has a projected surplus of fifty-two thousand eight seventy-five and that's due to savings in part-time wages, health insurance. Um, but also in telecommunications and tower regulations, uh, their new fiber, uh, line project is not completed yet. Um, based on, oh, so that was actually, yes, uh, just that that project is, is taking a little bit longer, it's not uh, completed yet. A second note on there, um, based on that surplus, which is now, um, what we're projecting, there was a twenty-five thousand dollar amount that was transferred in that department earlier this year. Um, as a suggestion, we could reverse that at this point based on the surplus. Um, but again, I have that material with me and we, we can talk about that after. Um, corrections is projecting a seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, surplus and that's due to staffing turnover as well as dietary savings. Restorative, um, they have a very small surplus, um, which is due to some savings and fuel, other than that, though, they're on track the end of the year. Health and Human Services has a two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar surplus. Um, that is because we budgeted for a three point five percent increase over the two hundred and twenty-two, yeah, two thousand and twenty-three budget, um, but it's decreased significantly and that's due to the drop in the county's Medicaid population. Debt service is showing a surplus of thirty-four thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. Um, we just mentioned that number could actually decrease, uh, depending on how our, our interest rate goes with our borrowing. Capital projects has a hundred thousand dollar, I'm sorry. Three fine notes, a hundred thousand dollars was transferred in here from nursing home maintenance to cover expenses of the failed HVAC system in the courthouse. Um, and there is some concern that that cost will exceed the hundred thousand dollars and so that may end up needing to be a transfer later in the year. Um, the other budgeted projects that were in there, the paving and the control system have been done. And then nursing home debt service, um, I'm just mentioning it because same as, uh, general fund debt service uh, with an additional tan, some of the surplus of twenty-three thousand dollars in there would be reduced. Nursing homes admin has a small surplus, but they're still on track. Nursing home maintenance has an eighty-three thousand dollar surplus and that's due to the sprinkler system project. Um, it didn't receive any bids, instead there were repairs done on it and that amounted to a twenty-five thousand dollar cost. And then also the VAB boxes, um, ended up costing half of the amount which was budgeted, that resulted in tax, sorry, hold. Nursing home rehab has a nineteen thousand eight hundred dollar surplus and that's due to an open physician. Dietary has a fifteen thousand dollar deficit and that's due to some repairs that were made on kitchen equipment. Um, also due to the dietary supplemental drink cost. Um, they were high starting in two thousand and twenty-three and they have not come down in cost, they're actually pretty astronomical. And that's like the insurer and those kinds of threats and they use a lot of those. Nursing has a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars surplus and that's due to open positions. Laundry has a very small deficit, um, and that's only because of the credit amount that goes into that line, the laundry they do for the jail. And that allocated to the interdepartmental allocation line. Housekeeping has a forty-five hundred dollar surplus projected and that's due to a staffing change. Uh, physicians and pharmacy has a twenty-five thousand dollar deficit, that's due to the nursing home census medical needs, so that will fluctuate depending on the resident healthcare need and it may continue to change, it probably will continue. Um, we'll update that as it does. Activities has a twenty-five hundred dollar surplus due to staffing. Progressing has a tiny deficit, um, right now and it should, uh, be able to be made up at another line. Um, so overall, projection, projecting an expense surplus of seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Um, and then revenues, uh, we're projecting a five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar surplus overall of revenues. And then both combined, that at the end of the year, we're projecting to add one million two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars uh, to the fund balance at the end of this year. Question, comment?
Uh, let's go to the sheriff's department for a minute.
Okay.
Discuss that twenty-five thousand dollar transfer?
Yes.
No longer needed, are you, are you recommending that transfer be reversed?
I am.
So where?
I'm, uh, recommending just reversing it and putting it back, um, into unanticipated expenditures, which is where it came out of.
Commissioner Waring?
I agree, I'll give that.
That's a motion?
Yep.
Second? All in favor?
I.
Ah, motion carries, thank you for the motion.
Thank you, and then I have that here to be signed.
Sure.
Do that at the end. If you wanted to move on to the next, I do have another transfer. Um, and that would be transferring the five thousand to admin and the seventy-four fifty to finance to cover legal and admin and health insurance and finance, that would, that would be expenditures. And I kept them separate because I thought it important to make sure we could see the movement of that. Uh, that was my other transfer I was going to be requesting.
Okay, so we state that request, you want to take the five thousand from admin?
Um, what I would like to do is make a transfer from unanticipated expenditures for twelve thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Put five thousand of it in admin legal and seven thousand four hundred and fifty of it in finance, health insurance to cover the deficits in both of those departments.
That makes sense, Commissioner Waring?
I'd like to hold off on any other transfers till later in the year. Similar to, so, I mean, we, there was a, there was an emergency that we, we needed to transfer twenty-five thousand into the sheriff's department and I I'll use the word argue, but I didn't, wasn't I argued at that point not to do it at that point? But we went ahead and did it and now here we are, two months later we're reversing it, so instead of continuing to move the shelves around, uh, I would, my preference would be to hold off, uh, and certainly want to hold off until Commissioner Hodges.
Yes. I agree, you don't see any urgency in that request, okay?
Uh, no, I, I'm pretty sure that we're going to have those, but I think it's August, we'll say it's September, so we'll be back and we'll address that later.
So I agree, Commissioner Waring?
Right, I guess I'll state my position again, and I don't know if, if those transfers are needed. I, I don't, I don't believe there is a requirement for us to balance a, a budget within a department, we held to the appropriation of the general fund and the nursing homes. Uh, so I, I personally, and that's been my, my position since day one of coming on this support of commissioners, that I, I don't necessarily know we need to transfer in and out.
Deborah?
I, um, see that because the delegation set no restrictions on the commissioner's authority to transfer.
Then we're on solid ground then.
Okay. All right.
That makes it much easier.
No questions?
Commissioner Waring? No, I do not, nor do I, Lori, thank you for your good report, appreciated. Deborah, other businesses?
I do have another. Um, and you have a one-page recommendation in your packet, this is to approve uh, requests for proposals that was put out for our computer, two computer servers that were, uh, from two thousand and seventeen. They need to be replaced, so they, they were money budgeted for this project. Tim Carey put the, put it up to bid, we received three quotes, they're listed on the back of that page. Uh, and the recommendation is that you go with Mainstate Technologies, which is the low bid and is very convenient because they are very familiar with our, uh, infrastructure. So I am recommending that you award this bid to Mainstate Technologies.
Am I correct in assuming that had Mainstate Technologies coming a bit higher by a couple of thousand, you make this same recommendation against this Mainstate?
Um, it would have been a tough call then, if it was only a couple of thousand. If it was a lot, we'd go, we'd go with someone else, we've done that before and and the difficulty then is we're, this is just to buy the hardware and then Mainstate would install it. So, uh, we are, that, that we, we've gone that way before, actually it didn't work out that great. Um, so it's nice to see Mainstay sharpen their pencil, I think they realized it didn't work out that great when when they end up putting in someone else's hardware. They like to win all these bids, which works out well for us.
Right, I think that was aside.
Yes.
Commissioner Waring? Moving the recommendations, present. Second, all in favor? I, I, the motion carries, thank you. Well, yeah, for Deborah.
That's all I have.
Okay, onto public comments. Seeing none? Motion to go into non-public session. Power say ninety-one dash A colon three, paragraph two, letter A.
And, and letter A, will you also add letter A?
I would see a letter A.
Yeah, it's, it's not on the paper, but it came.
Very good. Noted. Noted.
Uh, okay, uh, Commissioner Waring?
Yes.
Commissioner Spanos?
Yes.
Are in the public session.
Thank you.